Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting of Middleton Council for Tuesday, August 15th, 2017 to order, and the first item is the roll call.
Here.
Olsen, here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Tetris.
Here.
Ramsey.
Here.
Richard.
Here.
Teal.
Here.
What?
Present.
All present.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is to convene into closed sessions, so I need a motion to...
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we are in closed session now.
Lots of people to leave.
Okay, we are in open session, and the next item on the agenda is the comments from cities and present at 3 minutes per speaker. Anybody who wants to speak?
Aye.
Anyone who wants to speak?
Nobody wants to speak.
Okay.
That's true.
If there are no more, there are no speakers here, then the next item on the agenda is the presentations, and the first one is the overview of the city's emergency management plan, and G-Fork is going to talk about it.
I was asking to give a quick primer on the Middleton Emergency Management Plan, and given the lateness of when we started, I'll try to look through this, but please feel free to contact me if you have any questions or come by and visit and take a look at our Emergency Operations Center and take a look at our manuals and what our plans are and so on. That said, we do by ordinance have an Emergency Preparedness Commission. The mayor and council president are obviously a part of that. The police chief is the Emergency Preparedness Director, the fire chief, EMS director, and Public Works Director are also part of that commission. For emergency operations, we practice this a lot. This is a priority for all emergency services in Middleton, in Dane County, and in Wisconsin. And as you can see here, this was a sign that we had of an exercise in progress, and we try to do a major practice once a year at least. This was a couple of years ago. We worked in conjunction with the school district, and we had a bus accident. And one of the main things that was very helpful for police, fire, and EMS, also real helpful for the school district in their communication plans and their reunification of students with their parents, as you can imagine, that's one of the big things that they deal with is any type of emergency in the school, how do they get those kids back to their parents? And the students got to get made up and act like they were there. Fire department getting people out of a bus. We had police, fire, EMS from all over Dane County, several different districts and police departments participated in this event. One of the things we're very concerned about is our radio interoperability. We do have access to portable communication trailers, and our dispatchers practice this quite often in different types of programs. We have tabletop exercises. This is another one with the school district. This is in our EOC. We have a shoot-down camera from our ceiling that we can project onto a table. We also can use that during search warrants and so on, so we can get a look at an entire neighborhood or whatever. But in this case, we can have a street scene and have model cars and put resources where we think they should be and so on, so it's a great training tool. Again, just members of police, fire, EMS, school district at this tabletop. This was another practice that we had. This was a mock press conference, and I'll get into public information officers in a moment, but each department within the city has their own PIOs or Public Information Officers. For the police department, it's Captain Britt. For the city, it's Mike Davis. This was a mock press conference, though, for a school shooting, and sometimes things go out the window, and really don't want to talk to the police chief and the school superintendent. So we also have to practice for the reality of things. Last summer, we did a full-scale active shooter training at Middleton High School, and that was where we worked with, very closely with our fire and EMS and introduced some new tactics there, and that was the introduction of hot zones and warm zones. And that's where we will actually take firefighters and paramedics into a setting that's not quite, we don't necessarily have control of it, but we have learned that we have to get patients out of there. So we practiced with them on guarding them and getting them out of a warm zone, not the hot zone, but a warm zone. But again, it was a great way to practice with this and again with our school folks. And then we always debrief afterwards. And we usually get like a lunch or something, too, if we're in the school cafeteria. This year, both Mike Davis and I are working with Dane County Emergency Management and Wisconsin Emergency Management on what's called a dark sky. And eventually, in May of 2018, we're going to have a full-scale exercise where we lose power. And just even in this tabletop that Mike and I were involved in two weeks ago, we found out pretty quickly that, eh, we could do all right without power for a day. Three days, we're screwed. And this lasts three weeks. So, you know, it could happen. In this case, it's a terrorist hacking attack into the computer systems that disrupted the power grid in a certain section of Wisconsin, and we better know how to handle it because it could happen. So both Mike and I were involved in this exercise, and will be in the future. We also, for probably two years now, have been working on updating our hazard mitigation plan. Each city has their own annex for the Dane County Emergency Management Plan. The big change in the last five years has been global warming or the change in climate and preparing for, you know, 100-year storms that seem to be happening every other year and large-scale events like that that are affecting things. But we're looking at our most vulnerable areas in our community, putting them down on paper so that we know where they are and what they are and how to access them. We use, and all emergency management uses, the National Incident Management System, and that did become the standard for all emergency responders after 9/11. It's used for planned events, natural disasters, large-scale criminal acts or acts of terrorism, and it's based upon the Incident Command System. We use Unified Command or Police, Fire, EMS and any other agency or group or department that could be involved in a situation. We work closely together, and we do know how to work very closely together and work in that type of a setting. And this is just the typical ICS structure. We have a command staff, incident commander, and branches that follow below that. We have an emergency response plan. That's a copy of the hard copy. We don't have many hard copies, but in case we have that three- or five-day loss of power or three weeks...
I have one thing...
We've got a couple of them, thank you. But it is electronic. This is an all-hazard emergency operation plan that was put into effect in 2006 under the direction and guidance of the federal government. It provides a framework in which the city of Middleton and its political subdivisions can plan and perform their respective functions during a disaster or national security threat. We update the plan annually, and it's currently being updated as we speak. The plan, it's almost 700 pages, so it's quite extensive. It has 26 different annexes or specific incidents that are likely to occur in this area. So as you can imagine, you know, we don't really plan for hurricanes that we do for tornadoes, and it's area-specific. And they describe in detail how we should respond to things, who does what, when, and how. And the plan is available to public safety personnel. Obviously, it's not available online to the general public due to the concerns that it could be exploited by those with ill intent. But copies of that or smaller portions of that are available to all of our police officers and their squad cars, all the paramedics, all the firefighters, and obviously in our command center, we have access to the entire document.
Chuck, we also have them on G-drive here for employees at City.
Thanks, Mike. We do have an Emergency Operations Center at the police department. We have individual stations for the police, fire, EMS, DPW Communications, state administration, and outside agencies. It has an independent HVAC system, an uninterruptible power supply generator. It's in a hardened location, so should be tornado-proof. Cell phone boosters, since it's in our basement, we quickly found our cell phones weren't working, so we have cell phone boosters that we can dispatch from that location, and also has access to amenities like restrooms, sleeping quarters, and air kitchens. The Emergency Operations Center is a central location where all off-scene activities are coordinated. It's for senior managers and executives who would be located at the EOC. The key function of the EOC is to ensure that those located at the scene of the incident have necessary resources. It's also the liaison between local responders and county, state, and federal resources. And it would only be activated during serious long-term events. Just a few pictures of it. Many of you have been into our department and have seen our briefing room, but it also doubles as our EOC. Those are the individual carols that have computer access and access to different hard copies of records. They offer a semblance of privacy if need be. You can scoot in there, but also you can kind of scoot out and talk to your colleagues when need be. So what should elected officials do in an emergency? One thing is to consider taking some online courses, two in particular from FEMA, and send me an email if you want, I'll get you the link to these, but one is IS 700, and the other one is ICS 100. So take those, you understand some of the terms that we use, and understand what we're doing and when we're doing it and why. But I would respectfully say during an emergency, stay out of our way. We know what we're doing, and we're going to be really busy. As far as information release goes, each emergency service, as I said, has their own PIO. Mike is the city's PIO, but the release of consistent, accurate information is really critical. Getting that information out in a timely manner, making sure that it's accurate, is something that, you know, in retrospect, agencies that have gone through emergencies have found that that was sorely lacking, and it's something that we need to be careful about. We will share information with elected officials as soon as we can. The elected official's role is critical after an event, especially in the area of finances and recovery. If the emergency is a long-term event, providing information and guidance to constituents and sharing constituent information with emergency responders will be very important. It's not the role of the elected officials to focus on emergency management and response. Remember, all disasters are local. County, state, and federal agencies support local operations when local resources are exhausted. The public expects elected officials to be at the forefront of response and recovery efforts, and they look to elected officials for direction and reassurance. So again, I would say I didn't get through that quite quickly. I know we're in kind of a crunch for time, but if you have any questions at all, I ask you to seek me out, and if you have any questions at all, I can answer them.
Right, answer them, yes.
Hey, Keith. I'm getting just on group last week's point, you should make your assignments in my area of the state. One of the things that we noticed where we had the most trouble is with people who feel like they should be involved, as you said, or felt like they ought to know what they should do, and I'm wondering if all city staff or employers take ICS 100 at least, so they have an understanding of these and can connect with them.
Mike, I'll defer to you. I think our department has about taken those courses.
It was a pre-class.
Well, it was back in '06 when we adopted the plan, that many, in fact, all of our department heads, many staff took the class, but we, to my knowledge, have not done so since then. So we have new department heads. That's one of the reasons why we thought this was an opportune time. New department heads, new mayor, new city council members, to familiarize everybody with this structure that Keith has talked about, and also to encourage our staff to review the emergency plan that's on G-drive as well.
And the emergency responder, police, fire, EMS are all required to take various information on your level in the organization. But you're right, volunteers is a huge issue, you know, once you get into a situation and manage to volunteer, but early on, you know, people just wanting to get involved and trying to help, but they're not necessarily getting help.
So Chuck, if you send me those two links, I'll get them to the council as well as our supervisory staff.
I mean, that's Howard.
Chuck, what was going on across the road from Memorial? It looked like every, every emergency person, building, structure, vehicle, personnel, trailer, everybody was crawling all over the department lot back there last Friday afternoon.
Sorry, I don't know.
They didn't call you?
No, that may have been a drill. But we do, living in an urban area, we are very lucky that we can get a lot of resources when we need to. Both the fire service and paramedics have different ways of calling in resources from outside areas. Police, we have a thing called CATMOR, Capital Area Police Mutual Response. We can get a bunch of cops in a hurry if we need to, and we practice those, too, of just calling the CATMOR Level 1 through Level 7 and getting officers to a pre-designated area just to get a view.
They had video towers up in the air.
Yeah, that sounds like a drill.
They had, they had guys walking around six feet apart in black, full combat.
Sounds like an exercise.
Yep.
We hope.
I thought we were being defeated.
By the way, there is an occasion under an emergency where we can call together a meeting, a special meeting of the council, with six hours' notice. It used to be that it had to be personally delivered to your residence. It's not the case now because there's new legislation just signed by the governor that allows us to communicate electronically, the mayor to communicate electronically or by phone if electronic communications are not available, to establish a meeting with a six-hour notice.
And the meeting's at the Emergency Operations Center, right?
Could be. Could be here.
This is still working.
Because I think if we have a real emergency, you probably don't want us to have the emergency.
Mike, that does bring up the point that we're not credentialed in terms of actually badges, and with such, if you're expecting council members in an emergency to be on these roads, especially if there is at some point in time, sort of stopping traffic, you would want some sort of credentials in order to make sure you're getting the right people to go to the right place.
You mean for the city council meeting or for...
Or just in general, I mean, no, that would be part of your operations.
It's the same with city staff.
Yeah.
You have something to say?
Well, everybody, years ago, we used to have badges, she was, Elizabeth said.
Credentials or something.
Some kind of credential, some kind. But I see what you're saying is you could be stopped in...
City staff, I don't think you all start, so it's a good thing to think about.
Okay.
Many of us don't have those name badges anymore. We had them many years ago, and I still have mine, but we probably should.
Thank you, Keith. You have your comments, or?
Okay.
There's one short question, Chuck. From the point of view of the public, everything that you talked about was internal. How does, you know, as I grow older, as all of us grow older, how does the public keep up with what's happening? What's the system that there's a transfer of information?
Yeah, that comes into our public information officers and so on, pushing out information, you know, through social media, through TV, through radio, through our internet, email class and so on. But that really came up in that exercise when we lose power, because then it might be go to City Hall and read a flyer, you know, if it's that long-term. Short-term, we have really good ways of dumping out information in a hurry. It's got to be accurate information, though. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Keith.
Yes, sir.
So the next item on the agenda is youth center update.
All right. I'm Gabrielle Hanahara, and I'm the Director of Middleton Youth Center. I wanted to take this opportunity to give you all an update on the youth center's past year and to share with you Rebecca just passed out our year-end report that we just recently turned into Dane County. As a quick review, the youth center is a free after-school and summer program that's open to all fifth through eighth grade youth in the area. We're open every school day until 6:00 PM, and we also run an eight-week summer program. The report is pretty extensive, but I'll just go over a few highlights today. Our Dane County Reporting Psycho runs June through June, so the data shown on the report represents this past school year and the summer of 2016, so it doesn't include any numbers from this current summer, but I do have some recent numbers to share with you today as well. I'm going to skip the first page, attendance data for now, and come back to that at the end. The youth center does currently serve an equal number of male and female students, and 47% of the students we serve are youth of color. We provide well over 100 hours of structured, asset-based programming that's required by the county, including 250 hours of academic support alone. 13 adult volunteers provided 606 total hours of direct-service volunteer work, including caring for special needs students, leading programs like sports and slam poetry, and advising our construction team. Most importantly, we were lucky to host an intern from Madison College's Social Services Program who provided 16 hours of work every week and was essentially our fourth staff member this past year. 67 of our middle school students participated in a volunteer activity at the youth center, providing 271 total hours of volunteer work. In addition, 30 high school students volunteered at the youth center, either through tutoring our middle school students or through a high school student organization that led a guest activity. We offered 68 hours of leadership development, which is mostly focused on helping students to develop and lead their own clubs at the youth center. Throughout the, or through the past AmeriCorps program that we participate in, we've also been focusing on teaching students to set smart goals for their personal and school lives. This includes a pre-post test that is given before and after the participation. And so far, 23 of the 29 students who have taken pre-post tests increased their score by the target five points or more. As you can see in the revenue and expense section, funding for the youth center comes from a variety of sources, including the school district, the county, and of course, the city of Middleton. What's not shown here is a lot of in-kind support that we also receive, which includes the school district providing use of Clark Street Community School and providing busing after school and for two days a week throughout the summer. So that's a lot of numbers, I realize. If you're wondering what all of that data adds up to in terms of the actual experience of families and students in our community, the last part of the report highlights a few testimonies from youth center parents that I highly encourage you to read. Common themes include the high-quality staff and programming and the great benefit that a free program like this provides for working families and for single parents in particular. I know that you don't get to see the impact of the youth center firsthand, so I hope that gives you a taste of how important this program is. After all these highlights, I also do want to draw your attention to a good problem. Increased demand for the services that the youth center provides means that we're doing our job well. It also means that we need more resources, particularly when it comes to staff. Going back to page one of the report, during the 2016-2017 school year, we served on average 34 students per day, which is up from 14.5 in 2013-14, and 23 in 2014-2015, and about the same as our 33 per day average in 2015-2016. Something to note is that the summer average shown on the report is from 2016, which is 23 students per day. But this current summer, we served 43 students per day in June and 38 per day in July, which is almost double a year ago. Attendance was actually so high that we had to limit attendance on our weekly field trip days to between 24 to 30 students, depending on the trip, just due to our budget, so the average actually would be even higher without that limitation. We also serve many students with IEPs at the youth center, which is an individualized education plan, which means that due to a diagnosed learning or behavioral need, the school is legally obligated to provide additional resources to accommodate that student. Last year, the youth center served 37 students with IEPs, 21 of whom attended our program regularly. This summer, we were fortunate that we had an extra AmeriCorps member, and as I said earlier, we've also been lucky to host a 16-hour-per-week intern for the past three years, but this is not by any means guaranteed. This school year, in fact, it looks like the youth center may not be receiving an intern placement, and the rec. department is covering an LTE position for the youth center for this fall to cover that essential fourth staff position. Throughout the past three years, we have found that a staff-to-student ratio of 1 to 10 is really where we feel comfortable providing a high-level care for our students. In an ideal world, a lower ratio would be even better, especially considering all the special needs students that we serve, but we understand that resources are limited. Since we're a drop-in program, maintaining a 1 to 10 ratio is not always possible, even with four staff members. There were 15 days this spring and 12 days in June and July where we served between 40 and 54 students, which really calls for five staff members, not four. For that reason, I recommend that we look into adding a permanent part-time youth worker position to guarantee at least four staff members per day. And this would mean that if we do receive an intern in a given year, that we would have five staff members which would cover those high-attendance days. I realize that all of our funding sources are limited, so I think we also need to be creative about our funding options as well. One idea I would like to explore is a sliding fee scale for enrollment, which would allow us to charge enrollment fees based on family income, with low-income families still being able to use resource, or youth, sorry, with low-income families still being able to use the youth center's resources free of charge. Another idea is to ask local businesses to fund the youth center program. I truly do appreciate all the support that City Council and City of Middleton has shown the youth center since it's restarted about three years ago, and I hope that this information is helpful to you and that we can find a way to work together in the future to continue growing this program. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them as well.
Can we explore getting more money from the county? I think it's the same amount that we were paying about seven years ago, and it hasn't changed.
Dane County gives the same amount of funding to every youth center in the county, so there's about 20 or 25 youth centers on a day's report, but there's not an option for them to just decide to give Middleton more, that there's a set amount every year.
Could we ask these schools to get more than $18,000? That was also the same amount, but let's talk about this.
Yeah, and actually, when we added the past AmeriCorps position, the school district did decide that they would contribute half of the cash match needed for that position as well. So actually, their contribution is closer to $23,000 than the original $18,500.
And your first year, they also only gave $14,000.
Yeah, so they've slowly been increasing the contribution as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Gabrielle or Rebecca? Okay, thank you, Gabrielle. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda.
With approval.
Second.
Okay, so, I'm gonna call the court now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? When the motion passes, so. Now we are on to the agreements, and the first one is the dual payment agreement of $315,000 in tax increment to Finance District Number 3 assistance to Seaco Foods, 1845 Diamond Way. Yeah?
I believe that we defer.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Yes, Howard?
No, I'm just, I'm just answering. I'm not.
I guess defer is correct.
Yes. Any questions?
The agenda on September 5th.
Yes. Okay, I'm gonna call the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. The next one is the award of bid code professional services, and this is the bid award to walk paving for Millen Overlay for $205,795.15. It's PWC, Public Works.
Move approval is recommended by finance.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? This is really a good thing. We want to get this done soon. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the motion passes. The next one is award of bid of boli tree landscape care for street stump grinding for $77,350.
Blue approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any discussion? Yeah, well, Mark tried to get more than one quotation, but that's all he got, so. Okay. If there's no more questions, I'm going to call the question out, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes. The next one is budget. Number one is water utility budget transfer of $60,000 for radio read meters.
Blue approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm going to call the question out, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes. Now, we are on to miscellaneous. Approval of ADA transition plan, so.
Blue approval is recommended by PRC. Second.
I have a question for Matt.
Yes, Heather.
Or maybe Mike. This is only an ADA plan for our parks. Do we have an ADA plan for the rest of the city in terms of sidewalks?
For sidewalks?
Do we have a master's or an ADA plan?
Wait, wait a minute. I'm for the.
Right, I called on you.
It's a good look. He's just touching her head.
No, that was not even a sidewalk.
We don't have a formal written plan. What we have is an eight-year sidewalk inspection program that we pursue, and that then becomes our plan. So we upgrade curb ramps to ADA standards as we're walking within those, an eighth of a city, give or take a year.
Okay. So in terms of Matt's argument is we need to make sure we have a plan that's approved so that we don't get sued, or if we get sued, we have something, do we have something in place for sidewalks?
That's essentially our plan, yes. We have a sidewalk maintenance program in place, and we've consistently funded that, and that is our defense.
Okay, any more question, either to Matt or Sean? Okay, I'm going to call the question out, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. The next one is proposal from cities as a policy to conduct a reevaluation for the 2018 settlement year.
Blue approval is recommended by Finance and Personnel. Second.
Okay, any more discussion? I think we have plenty of it, so. Okay, all of those in favor of this say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes. Okay.
Oh, sorry, no. Three no's.
Okay, three no's.
I object. I feel like a full-time employee should do other duties as assigned, at least I'm required to do so in my work.
Okay, so the motion passes five to three. So the next one is referral regarding establishing polling place locations.
Blue approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any discussion?
Which was to go under contract with Espr, Espr. So people know that worked in Finance.
Yes. Any comments or questions? Okay, then I'm going to call the question out, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the motion passes. Next one is demand for payment from Valenti Health Contractor, Developer Incorporated, subcontractor Drax Incorporated for the Conference Pond dredging project.
Blue approval is recommended by Finance. Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Larry, you want to say anything?
No. Sorry, I'm going to follow up. I think I would quit Mark. Just to double check, I don't think Drax is going to come back and sue the city for paying Valenti Health.
They're going to lose if they do. I mean, the bottom line is that the public improvement lien statute expressly states that if, well, the way it works is once the lien is filed, the general contractor has 30 days to contest it. They did not. Therefore, any objections they might have had are gone. So it's all statutory, and I believe, and it's too bad for them, but they, neither the first one nor the second one had any objection to Drax.
So my question is, the first one is even a bigger deal, so these guys didn't sell us part of the city, they didn't dredge.
Well, I'm not saying they don't get paid, they just don't get paid through the lien fund, through the lien procedure, because they failed to follow on on that.
But in some way.
Drax still owes them as a subcontractor on the city project.
So somehow, they will find a way to get paid.
Well, yeah, because we don't have a contractual relationship with Valenti Health.
Okay.
We only have one with Drax.
Okay.
This special arrangement replaces the normal thing where we would pay Drax, Valenti Health would have turned in lien waivers, and it would be done through that.
All right. So any questions or comments? I'm going to call the question out, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. The next one is planning zoning. And the first one is concept review, the request for tax incremental finance district theory assistance for proposed hotel development.
Blue approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
And we're just approving the concept.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? All of those, I'm going to call the question out, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. Need a motion to adjourn.
Blue adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.